Joe takes care of Patty.
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the October 7th meeting of the St. Mary's County Planning Commission. There are sign up sheets in the foyer. One is a sign up sheet if you are speaking this evening. The other is a sign up sheet for attendees of these hearings. And in case any further information needs to be sent to you regarding the cases, please sign in on one of these sheets. Our meetings be recorded for the public record. Any comments made by anyone present must be recorded as part of the record. Therefore, if you have anything to say, you must come up to one of the microphones provided. Your comments cannot be recorded and placed in the record unless they are directed to a microphone. You are to direct your statements, questions, or responses to the board only, and we will direct them to the appropriate person for that for an answer. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone testifying or asking questions during our public hearings will be required to take an oath. I also ask that you please speak up close to the microphone when you come up and that you silence your cell phones at this time. Thank you for your cooperation. On our agenda this evening, after a review and approval of the September 16th and September 23rd minutes, we have two discussion items. One will be for our planning commission and TEC committee schedules for 2025. Following that would be a comprehensive plan consultant introduction. And following that, we have our public hearing this evening, which is CSP 23-0309 for the tidal wave car wash concept site plan. We also will discuss the director's report, followed by adjournment. Did everybody, I'll go ahead and introduce the board members this time, starting to my left.
Good evening. Lynn Dellahey.
Patty Robrecht.
Howard Thompson.
Joe Van Kirk.
Jay Coosnow.
John Brown.
Michael Brown.
Okay, also with us from the Department of Land Use and Growth Management, we have their director, Ms. Jessica Andrich. We have planners, Brandy Glenn and Sean Lay Blasco. And our senior planning specialist is Megan Higgs Carter. Also with us from the county, our sporting staff, our deputy county attorney, Mr. John Sterling Hauser, the director of the Department of Public Works and Transportation, Jim Gotch, from the St. Mary's County Metropolitan Commission, Anna Wells. And our video media producer this evening is Amy Carter. Hope I didn't leave anybody out. Okay, at this time, we have two sets of minutes. Did everybody have a chance to review the revised or corrected, what was it, September 16th minutes? Those of you that can vote on those, did everybody? Okay, do I have a motion to accept those?
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the 16th.
Okay. Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second by Mr. Brown. All in favor of that, I know we, Jay, you weren't here for that, I don't believe, or were you?
No, I was not.
Okay.
Wasn't here on the 16th either.
Okay, anybody that's abstaining, go ahead and tell me now. I know Jay, Mike Brown, and Lynn, okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, I need a motion for, to approve the September 23rd minutes.
Make a motion that we approve the September 23rd minutes.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, sir. Do we have anybody that needs to abstain from these?
I abstain.
Aye.
You're abstaining? Were you both?
No.
Okay.
You were here that night.
I abstained, I was going away.
All right, were you here that night?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving right along. Let's see, first thing we have on this, oh, thank you. Okay, then the first thing we have this evening, did everybody get a copy of the schedules for next year, both TEC and for the planning commission?
Yes.
Yes.
Any problems? Okay, I have a motion to accept those?
Make a motion to accept the calendar that was sent out.
Okay. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, um, now we're going to meet our consultants. Good evening.
Good evening. Jessica Andrich, the director of Land Use and Growth Management, good evening. This evening, in just a moment, we're going to be bringing up some representatives from the project team, specifically the consultants of Clarion Associates. And they're going to provide with a brief overview of what the project will look like. I understand that there will be a lot of questions that you have. Please reach out to me offline to send me your questions. We will review them with the consultant, and then we will send you the answers. But what we're also going to do, but we'll remove the sender's identity before we post to the website, we are developing a project website that will give the community up to date information as to where we are with the project, if there are certain meetings or events scheduled to take place throughout the community in the coming year or so, so that everybody is able to stay informed. So that information is forthcoming, but we will be uploading questions such as the ones that you all may have to the FAQ area of the website. We find through the years that when one person has a question, chances are others will have the same question. So when that information becomes available and that project website goes live, you all will receive information about how to access that website. Having said that, to the extent that there are questions that you or the public has, we've asked our director of information technology to set up a dedicated email address for all of those types of questions and feedback. And let me give that email address to you now. And in just a moment, you will learn about the significance of that particular email address.
Is Saint spelled out or S-T?
Nope, it's S-T, everything is S-T. So in the beginning, so S-T-M-A-R-Y-S-2050@ST.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, and there is no punctuation other than the M-D dot gov. And with that, I'm going to ask the consultant to come on up.
Good evening.
Thanks for having us, Mr. Chair and Commissioners.
Thank you.
Glad to be with you to launch this project. This is a really important event. Updating a comprehensive plan is something communities do once a generation, so it's really important. And I'm going to share here in just a moment a presentation that'll provide an overview of the project, a little bit about the team that's been hired to assist the county in development of the comprehensive plan update, and a little bit of the specifics about how we're going to conduct public engagement during this process. I think we're almost there. I'll go ahead and introduce the team members that are in the audience right now. So again, my name is Leigh Anne King. I'm a director at Clarion Associates. We're a planning and zoning firm that's based out of Chapel Hill, North Carolina. Our headquarters is actually in Denver, Colorado. And I'm here with my two colleagues, Gordy Moore and Christian Smith, that are going to be working on the project. Gordy and I are the coordinator and project manager, so you'll see us at all of the in-person meetings that we do, briefings to you all, the public engagement meetings. We'll be the folks kind of on the ground, working with some of our other teaming partners that you'll see the faces of here in just a moment. I'll go ahead and just tell you who those other teaming partners are. We have Burns &amp; McDonald, that's going to be helping, and Angeline Crowder is leading that team. They're going to be working on the transportation, utility, and other kind of infrastructure assessments and policy development as part of this plan. We also have Innovation Resources Group to help with natural lands and hazard planning, preservation efforts, et cetera, anything kind of natural lands focused. They'll be our support on the project with respect to those analyses and policy development. Let's see. Don't want to spoil too much of what's going on, but St. Mary's 2050 that Jessica Andrich alluded to, oh, here we go, great. Okay, I'll hold off on sharing that information until we get through this. So let me see if I can forward us here, there we go. So I'm going to do a little bit more of introduction, I'll let you see the faces of some of the consultant members and share again what some of their roles are, talk briefly about the comprehensive plan, what the purpose is, and what we're going to be undertaking during this project, an overview of that, of the project process, again, some of the public engagement strategy, and then some requests for feedback. We're going to be meeting, if we haven't already met with you, we'll be meeting with each of you, either individually or in groups of two, and just have a few questions we want to kind of tee up for you to be thinking about, to respond to if we haven't already met with you at this time. So again, the Clarion team, at the top is actual Clarion Associates team, you see myself, Gordy, and Christian, and Addie Sherman, who assists us with a lot of the website and graphics development for the plan. Burns &amp; McDonald, again, led by Angeline Crowder, and her team there will be assisting, again, with utility, transportation, and other kind of infrastructure-related analyses. And then Innovation Resources Group, Will Allen and Jamie Christensen, that will be supporting us with respect to environmental resiliency and work in lands planning. So team roles, so Clarion Associates are our firm, we will be overall project managers. So again, you'll be seeing us, we're going to facilitate the meetings, we'll conduct all the public engagement in support of your land use growth management office. We'll also be conducting a lot of the technical analyses on this project, specifically related to socio-demographics, land use, community character, economic development, and historic and cultural heritage components of the plan. We're also going to be helping to develop the actual policies in the plan and the implementation portion of the plan, again, focusing on land use, economic development, tourism, and housing components of the plan. Burns &amp; McDonald, they're going to be focusing on current and future transportation systems, public facilities and services, and creating policy and plan development and implementation strategies related to those topics. They'll also provide some public engagement assistance because they have staff in their Baltimore office, so they can assist with what we call public intercept events. So if you have festivals, farmers markets, other activities going on that we could send someone to, to have a table and have information available, that's an opportunity for them to be providing some public engagement assistance. And then IRG, Innovation Resources Group, they're going to be, again, focusing on assessments of environmental conditions, current sustainability policies and initiatives, areas of critical concern in agricultural lands, and helping develop kind of policy and actions related to those items. So this is the branding for the project, St. Mary's 2050, charting our tomorrow. This is the branding for the update to the St. Mary's County Comprehensive Plan that was adopted in 2010. So you'll be seeing this graphic on all of the kind of public engagement publicity materials, emails. We look forward to working with you to kind of help spread the word for St. Mary's 2050. A little bit about the comprehensive plan itself, it is required per Title III of the land use article of your state statute, your state code. Comprehensive plans are required in the state of Maryland, but they're also just good planning practice. If you think about any successful business organization, nonprofit, they plan for the future, and so it's good guidance to be doing so. This is long range, we're looking through 2050, so kind of the next 25 years for the county. The policy guidance included within this plan is really going to be focused on what we call physical planning. So again, land use, conservation, infrastructure, anything that's on the ground and physical is really kind of fair game for inclusion within the comprehensive plan. It is policy guidance, so it's a little different from your comprehensive zoning ordinance, which is law. And so there's some flexibility in terms of that policy guidance. This comprehensive plan will be built from inclusive public engagement. We really want to be hearing from as many folks in the community as possible, and we'll be providing opportunities for you to help us kind of engage with folks. I have a little bit of information later on about one strategy that we're going to be taking on, which is called a community engagement team to help support outreach efforts to really spread the word far and wide across the county. The comprehensive plan at its core really serves to guide, serves as a guide to direct growth and support preservation efforts, that's really kind of its role within community governments. And it's implemented through updates to the comprehensive zoning ordinance and through other actions that the county might take in the future. Generally speaking, best practices for comprehensive plans to be updated every 10 years. We like to show this community planning cycle when we're doing community plans, particularly comprehensive plans, because it helps kind of show how this fits into the broader cycle of planning for a community. So that first phase, establish policy priorities, that is the role of the comprehensive plan, is really to set the high-level, long-range policy goals for the community. Those can then be leveraged in that second phase to set work priorities for the department, maybe part of a county strategic plan or other departmental work plans to really start putting into motion the ideas and actions identified within the comprehensive plan. That feeds into Phase Three, if there are some items that come out of the comprehensive plan process that require infrastructure investment or other kinds of revenues to be supporting their implementation, that feeds into the county's budget process and CIP process. Once the fund is in place, Phase Four moves on to the actual implementation of those priorities through various operational initiatives or capital projects. And then fifth, we recommend that as part of development of the comprehensive plan, we assess progress. So we want to include metrics in this plan that we will work with you to identify to help measure and evaluate progress over time, not just that you're actually doing the things you say you want to do, but that you're moving the needle in the right direction in the way that you want to be doing it. You do have a currently adopted comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2010, and this is the document that we will be updating through this process. We want to honor what's in there today, so a lot of what we'll focus on is what is new and different in 2024 from this currently adopted plan. And those are really going to be some of the key things that we want to prioritize and focus on in this effort. It's an 18-month project, so we're starting here fall of 2024, and the target for adoption is going to be kind of winter, very early spring of 2026. It's a four-phase process, so we're launching the project, that just takes about two months to get the website up and get the branding completed, do the kickoff meetings, of which this is a part of. We're going to do a reconnaissance tour Wednesday of this week, and also the completion of the various county interviews that we're doing on this kickoff trip. And then we'll move very quickly here into Phase Two, and that's a really important phase, because that's where we're going to be doing a lot of our kind of fact finding. We'll do a lot of analysis on trends and projections for the county and really understand what's the data telling us about the county today that's different from what it was in 2010. It's also an opportunity for us to be conducting public engagement. So we'll have our first, what we call, community engagement window, or CEW number one, in January and February of next year. And that will be an opportunity to get community feedback about the vision and goals for the plan that will help guide the rest of the planning effort. And we will develop some draft components of the plan during Phase Two, again, the vision and goals based on that community feedback. Then we'll kind of roll into Phase Three, develop policies and strategies. One of the first things that we're going to do as part of that is, again, go out to the community with some particular policy questions that we have about willingness to support different alternatives from what's being done today and get community feedback on those. That will then really help guide us with respect to the direction that the plan needs to be going in, along with your kind of guidance as well. We will be having briefings to the planning commission at each of these milestones throughout the project. And then once we have that guidance, we will start actually drafting the plan. We will bring a draft out to you all for review and then take it out to community engagement window number three. We call that the plan unveil. It gives the community an opportunity to see the whole plan outside of the adoption process and provide feedback, so we can, again, make kind of fine-tuning tweaks and changes based on the input that we get through that engagement window. We'll bring that back to you and say, here's what we heard on the draft, and here's what our recommendations are for tweaking it. We'll have a discussion about that. From there, we'll create a public hearing draft that goes into Phase Four and the formal kind of adoption process at that point. It's our goal, and usually, most cases, we accomplish it, to have the adoption process be somewhat of a non-event, because we've given opportunity for lots of feedback and engagement throughout the process, so there aren't any surprises when we, once we actually get to the adoption hearings. So our community engagement strategy, again, we call those community engagement windows, of which we have three of them. And for each of those windows, we will have in-person public workshops, multiple, and then we will also have analogous online activities. So if people aren't really comfortable going to a public meeting, doesn't work with their schedule, et cetera, they will be able to participate online. We try to make it as easy as possible for folks to be able to participate throughout the project. And then I mentioned earlier the idea of the community engagement team. This is something that we've used on several other projects that's been really helpful. The best way to get people involved in a community planning process like this is for people that they know and trust to tell them it's important to do so. And so we're going to be establishing an engagement team of volunteers from within your community that are going to help spread the word and do outreach prior to each of these community engagement windows, so we can make sure that we have good turnout and good representation across the county at those meetings and through the online activities. Important to this process, there are a lot of different groups that are involved in development of the comprehensive plan, and so it's helpful to kind of understand the various roles and responsibilities attached to each of those. So at the top of the graphic here, we've got community members. And again, you know, this plan is really built from public, inclusive public engagement, and we want to make sure that we're getting feedback from the community throughout the process. There are also county stakeholders, again, that we're interviewing on these kickoff meetings that we're having today and the next two days. And really, those are a collection of planning commissioners, commissioners of the county, heads of various departments that play a role in the comprehensive plan, as well as other kind of partner agencies such as Metcom, and so, and other important stakeholders within the community. So we're going to be meeting with them over the next two days, we've met with several folks today. The planning commission obviously plays a very important role as advisor, reviewer, recommenders of plan adoption. We will be, again, meeting with you at key milestones throughout the process and briefing you and getting your feedback on the direction of the plan, so that we can consider that and incorporate that as we move forward. And then the commissioners of St. Mary's County obviously are final decision makers, they are the ultimate adopters of the plan, and they will be the ultimate implementers of the plan at the same time. At the bottom of the graphic here, we have the project team, both the county land use and growth management team, as well as the consultant team that I shared the members of early in the, in the presentation. So for those of you that we haven't met with yet, we have a couple of different, you know, objectives that we want to achieve during our interviews. And so just, this is really just meant to be kind of food for thought if we haven't met with you yet. You know, what objectives do you want to ensure are accomplished during this project? What are the things that you want to make sure we achieve at the end of the day when we bring this draft plan to you next kind of winter, spring? And that could be with respect to public engagement, community issues you want us to be addressing and researching, potential plan outcomes, or there are particular components of the plan that we want to add this time around that maybe aren't in the currently adopted plan. And then we also want to think about the big opportunities that can be supported through the comprehensive plan update. It's a long-range plan, 25 years in the future, it's the opportunity to kind of think big and big picture about the community. Do we want to enhance quality of life, and what does that look like? Preservation efforts, supporting economic development, tourism, infrastructure. So if you want to kind of be thinking about those considerations, we can kind of fold those into our conversations moving forward. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions, and I know Jessica, you know, will respond to, help respond to any questions that go to that email address as well.
Does anybody have any questions? We have a lot of work ahead of us, be glad to see you all come back at the beginning of the year, get us started.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you. Pleasure to meet y'all. Okay. Moving right along, does anybody need a break before we go to the big hearing? All right, moving right along then, we'll go ahead, our first public hearing this evening is for the tidal wave car wash. Do we have the representatives for that group here? Good evening, sir. Sean, let me click off a couple of things here. Okay. Go ahead, Sean. Thank you. Keep me straight. I was so excited about the comp plan, I forgot. Anybody that will be testifying this evening, if you would like to stand at this time and we'll get you sworn in, any public testimony? And if I don't remember y'all, we'll ask you when you stand up to speak tonight. Do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Okay, thank y'all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. On the agenda tonight is the concept site plan, CSP 23-0309, tidal wave auto spa. The concept site plan seeks approval for 3,615 square feet tunnel building, 367 square feet accessory building, and 15 open-air vacuum station car wash. The site is located on Trinity Road, California, Maryland. The comprehensive plan area is growth area. The zoning is, the land use area is mixed-use medium intensity. The zoning is MXM, medium intensity mixed-use. The purpose of MXM is to include a broad range of uses adjacent to principal transportation corridors with ample connectivity for vehicles and pedestrians. Use type 62 is a permitted use in this zoning district. Motor vehicle maintenance service minor. As noted, in the staff, in the staff report, these regulations are, that are applicable to the review of this project. Section 51.3, specific regulation and standards. Concept site plan has been reviewed. The wash water recycling system will be installed. Staff finding, design meets requirements. Schedule 32.1, development standards. Floor area ratio, .2, building footprint, 3,615 square feet. Landscaping area, minimum 20%. Usable open space is 19.2%. Staff finding, with the exception of minimum landscaping, design meets requirements. Chapter 63, landscaping and buffer yards. Landscaping is proposed for .45 acres. Variance required. Buffer yards, 10 feet and fence on the northwestern boundary. Variance required. Staff finding, design does not meet requirements. Variance required. Chapter 62, off-street parking and loading. Design meets requirement. Chapter 71, resource protection. Staff finding, non-tidal wetland has been located on the property. Variance is required to disturb 25-feet wetland buffer. In order to approve the concept site plan, the planning commission shall make the finding that the proposed development is consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable functional plans. May be served by adequate public facility as required. May be served by adequate public facility as required by section 70 dot 2 dot 2. Will promote health, safety, and welfare of the general public. Adequately developed recreational and other, and other community amenities are provided in accordance with the comprehensive plan and the comprehensive ordinance. Is consistent with chapter 62 design objectives. This conclude the staff report and is entered into the record of this public hearing as exhibit two. Mr. Speech from Bowler Engineering is here to represent the applicant. Are there any question for me?
Any questions to staff at this time? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nick Speech, I'm with Bowler Engineering.
What was your name, please?
Nick Speech. On behalf of tidal wave car wash, we've got the other team members here, Mr. Chris Longmore, who's going to kind of emcee a few things for us, and Mr. Mike Lenhart, who is with Lenhart Traffic, who is going to be here to answer questions about the, the traffic concerns.
Yeah, sounds good. Just a couple introductory remarks and I'll turn it back over to Mr. Speech. So we do have the plan that he's going to present as the engineer on the project. Mr. Lenhart is here to talk about any traffic engineering questions that the planning commission has. I'll state at the outset that I know the commission is aware and, and this hearing has been continued a couple of times. My client has looked at the other project that's being developed nearby, the townhouse project. They've looked at the, the piece of land, the strip of land that's behind their piece of property. At this point, I don't know that anybody has figured out who is the title holder to that strip of land, but the strip of land that I know the planning commission is interested in possibly being a future access road to some of the sites there. My client has come forward with their original proposal because in looking at that, there are both topographical issues that would make it very difficult to access that directly at this time. There's concerns about who owns it and what the process would be to get access to that. And they also believe that the project as designed meets all the, all the criteria of our zoning ordinance. So they've come forward with their original proposal. That being said, they recognize that the, the planning commission and staff as well that appeared at, at the hearing on that other project are interested in that being a future access way of some kind. My client is willing to dedicate or donate 10 extra feet to that access strip so that once it is determined whether that can be used for future access, whether title can be attained to that, whether by the county or some other private party, it would then be 40 foot, 40 feet in width instead of 30 feet. So that would make it a more usable access road than having it be as narrow as 30 feet, which would be a lot more narrow than some of the other roads that are there. You could, I think, put a road in there, but you wouldn't have things like bike lanes and, and medians down the middle of it unless it's wider than that. So they are willing to donate that. I wanted to say that at the outset because I know that was a question that preliminarily came up in our discussions with staff. With that, I'll turn it over to Nick to do the original, to do the presentation of the site plan itself. Mr. Lenhart's here and we're all happy to answer any questions the planning commission has.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can, you can use the mouse because we're getting it from the thumb drive and I don't have any more room for this. So I'll do that for you.
Perfect. Thank you. You can jump to the next slide. Thank you. So as staff mentioned, you know, we're here to, to put a car wash out on this site. It is going to be a 3,615 square foot car wash building located on the four and a half acre site, which the use itself does meet the zoning requirements under mixed-use medium designation. So if you can go to the next slide, please. This is just a slideshow in the existing conditions, what's out there today. As staff mentioned, there is a wetland down in the, the southern corner of the site, right at the intersection of Route 4, Route 235. We did go out and survey that to determine the, the limits of that wetland. So that is accurate based off of field topography and, and field survey. Also on the site, there is a, a large wooded area. There's a few structures and then a driveway with a couple of trees around those areas. The main intent on this is that the, the structures and the driveways that you see will be demolished as a part of this application, but a large portion of the, the green area will be remaining and will not be touched as a part of this, which we can get into on the next slide, please. This is our, our site plan layout that we're proposing. As you'll see, on the eastern side of the site off of Route 4, there is a right-in, right-out entrance that's being proposed. That loop road, we can call it, will come in, will serve the car wash itself via that road or the, the portion of the road at the top. There's also going to be a right-in, right-out entrance off of Three Notch down at the south end of the site. On the site plan portion itself, there will be access to the tunnel car wash there on the left-hand side. The pay stations just before the, the entrance to the car wash. And then as mentioned, there will be 15 vacuum stalls for patrons to use once the, they're done with the wash, as well as additional parking spaces for visitors, employees, and, and other folks. So we have a total of 38 parking spaces between the, the two uses, the vacs and the, the regular spaces themselves. One other thing that you'll see on this site, we have three bio-retention areas that we're proposing to treat all stormwater. We obviously are adding impervious to the site, but with the bio-retention areas, I, I believe were required to, to meet about 4,000 cubic feet of storage. We're actually almost doubled that with the amount of stormwater being provided to make sure that both stormwater requirements are taken care of and pre-to-post flow requirements from existing condition to proposed condition are controlling the, the storm events to make sure that there's adequate and safe discharge from the site. One thing that was mentioned, we do have a few variances that we will be seeking. One to kind of show from this site, or this view rather, there is a little bit of grading within the wetland buffer that you'll see down on the bottom right-hand side. It is going to just be grading in that area. We're not putting any structures, we're not putting any impervious surfaces. So that is just to be able to grade that road down. And as I mentioned, everything else on that side of the site will stay as it is today. So there won't be any clearing in there and, and the wetland itself will not be altered. And then additionally, as we mentioned, the, the area to the north, we do tie out some grades up there, but for the most part, that area is going to remain existing as is today. And you can see to what Mr. Longmore mentioned previously, there, there is some steep grading up to the north side of the site, which is what makes that road a little bit more difficult. But that area as, as proposed with this application is to remain untouched. If you can go to the next slide, please. This slide shows the landscape plan that's being proposed. As you'll see, we do have some landscape planting in the parking lot. That is one of the variances that we'll be, we will be seeking though, as we can't meet fully because of the use and the way that we're trying to limit the disturbance on the site, but also the need for the parking spaces and the vacuum stalls as it relates to the car wash use itself creates a, a difficulty in getting more planting. Overall though, as I mentioned, there will be a lot of the existing tree line that will remain on the rest of the site. So we think that, that helps balance it out. One other area that we will be seeking a variance is mentioned, along the western side of the site, the buffer is going to be reduced to about 10 feet rather than the, the 35 feet that's needed. In order to, to kind of help mitigate that, we still are planting in that area. We're also proposing to put in a fence which will help with sightlines and with noise. So we think between that, the variance that's being sought after is, hopefully, you know, that, that application or that request is, is mitigated by that fence.
Nick, that's on lot 21, and I know it's 20 and 21 combined through the plat, but it's on that, above that, that hyphenated line on the landscape plan, right? Is where the variance would be needed.
That's correct.
Okay.
So this slide speaks a little bit more to the stormwater that I had mentioned previously. As you'll see, there are three micro bio-retention areas that are proposed just to the, where you see the designation for A3. There are two bio-retention areas in between the parking and the ring road itself. And then there's another bio-retention area just at the entrance to the car wash, just past the pay stations. So there will be surface flow of water through curb cuts to get into those bio-retention areas. And then once the water's filtered, there are under drains to help pick up the water and put that into a closed system that will connect out into Three Notch for the ultimate outfall. Another thing to mention on this, the water and sanitary sewer is all going to be connected out to Three Notch, so that will be on a public system as well. If you can go to the next slide, thank you. And this one just shows during construction how we plan to put the erosion sediment control measures up to make sure that the construction side of things is kept neat and clean, meeting all state and county standards through a mix of stabilized construction entrances, super silt fence, inlet protection. And then those will be installed and maintained throughout construction with regular inspections. And then that is the, the presentation. And as I mentioned, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer it, but I can also turn it over to Mr. Lenhart to talk a little bit about traffic.
Before we get to you, Mike, does anybody have any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I have some questions.
Okay.
Let's, let's go back to the landscaping where you mentioned all the variances.
Uh huh.
With a four and a half acre piece of property and a 3,700 square foot building and a 300 some square foot of the building, which is 4,000, a tenth of an acre, you got four and a half. Why in the world do you need all them variances for landscaping and distances and setbacks and buffers and everything?
Sure. So I think one of the biggest reasons is because of that wetland. You know, we're, we're trying to not disturb the wetland as a whole, and that really takes up a big portion and kind of limits the width of what we can do with the site plan. We could extend it further to the north, but as that topography starts getting a little bit more difficult, we felt like it was better to keep the, the impacted area and that limited disturbance smaller so that it doesn't create more issues with impervious surfaces and things like that. But also by doing this, we were able to keep more existing green space. And so we felt like having less disturbance, the variances were a better, better path forward.
So there's somewhere in here, I seen something about a convenience store and a gas station. Is that not planned on this property?
It is not. All, all that's coming forward is this gas station.
I know all that's coming forward, but there was something in here that showed, and I'm sure we'll get to it in the staff report.
I think at one point, there was a discussion of potentially doing more, but that hasn't been flushed out or anything. And at this point, the applicant has no intention of doing anything further.
Because it just looked like everything's trying to be pushed to one little area, leaving all the area to the north and all the area to the east. And I know you have a, part of that is wetlands, but it just, it just seemed like the way everything is pushed to the side. It, especially after I seen that note in here about the gas station and the convenience store, that it looks like, I know it's not part of this plan, but we've had that, we've had that case in here many, many times where they do this and they, you know, in a year or six months, they're saying, oh, you know, we want to do something else on there. It just, it just seems out of place to.
Understood. Yeah, at, at this point, I, I don't have any knowledge of them moving forward with anything else or any knowledge of the negotiations of it. I know originally there was a discussion of it, but from what I've been told at this point, that's not, that's not on the table.
Okay, let me ask you one more question. On the right-in, right-out on Route 4, it doesn't exactly show, how far back is that from the intersection? I'm not sure if you and Mr. Lenhart knows that. Is it past the, the concrete median between the northbound and southbound?
It's not.
So it's before that?
Yeah, the, the median is, is there where that, if you look on here, it's, it's kind of hard to see, but you can see the median, there's a, a line that says 121 plus 00. That's where the median kind of starts and stops.
Okay. Because I'm just worried about with the only access is right out and then a right-out on 235, people are going to be trying to cut. I know you can't control bad habits, but people are trying to cut back out there and go down Route 4, you know, north on Route 4.
Yeah, and, and I will say, I think, you know, with the, the way the right-in, right-out entrances are designed, having that median in there, the little pork chop that's going to be raised, and so that is meant to deter that.
That will have one of them pork chop, raised up curbs?
It will.
Types in, in, in the middle?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Piggybacking on Mr. Van Kirk's, y'all are bringing all your, just looking at the photo, I'm just going to say left or right instead of exact north, but on the, I'll say the side next to the dentist office. Explain your planning and your, your buffer area that you're going to do there and why you want it that skinny.
So again, I think the biggest thing is that wetland really kind of takes what we can do with the site and, and kind of squeezes that in. So to be able to have the, the proper means of ingress and egress, having that roadway through there, but and also having the drive aisle so that the vacuums can be accessed and the tunnel itself, you know, that, that footprint kind of is about the size that it needs to be, it can't get much smaller. And so with that wetland being on the side, we can't really go much further out and slide that towards the east because it'll start impacting the wetland itself rather than just being able to grade slightly in the buffer. So that's really what shrinks that, that buffer on the, the western side. What we are planning on doing is putting some trees on that side, mostly evergreen trees to try to keep the, the sight lines closed off. But then also, like I mentioned, we're going to put in a fence to help with sight and noise. And so that's what we're doing because we are so constricted due to the constraints of the wetland.
And will that fence be, I'll say from 235 all the way to the back of your building site?
Yes.
So there won't be any access for somebody to come over? Because one thing I worry about the, the noise from the vacuums, next door you have a dentist office, very quiet business. And when you get all your, but how many vacuums you're going to have on site?
There are 15.
It's a lot of, it's a lot of big vacuums going, you know, and having gone to a car wash, so I'm, they are a little bit noisy, but they're not a little bit noisy, they're a lot of bit noisy unless you have really good stuff. It worries me about the noise that'll be, be heard next door. And the lighting you'll have will be all directed onto your site, I'm sure.
Correct.
Just for the record, the, the site where the, the office is located, there is not a variance needed on that lot, right? It's only the lot in the back, lot 21 for the back. I think that lot is lot two.
So you're going to have an office there?
Undeveloped one where we need a variance for it. The other one did not need it, as I understood. I don't know if, if I read that correct.
Leave that it is for, let me double check. It's on the, the northwest property line.
So on the other lot, you're actually planning on building an office building? Is that what you're saying?
No, on the, on the undeveloped lot in the back is the one that requires the variances. I read the staff report, not the front.
But you're planning on building a?
Because it's already developed.
You're going to be planning on building a, an office back there, office building?
Right now, there's nothing back there, nothing being planned back there.
The variance is only needed against the lot 21 in the back that is undeveloped at this point. The zoning ordinance would require half of a B buffer yard there for the buffer yard variance.
Where's the office going to be that you were just discussing?
No, I wasn't discussing an office. I, I didn't say office. What I said is the dentist office that you asked about, there's no variance needed for that property because it's already developed with a commercial use. There's no variance needed for that property because it's already developed with a commercial use. But in the back, the undeveloped one does require a buffer yard variance. So it'll be a similar landscaping theme down throughout, all evergreens and fencing throughout. So it'll look consistent. There's only a variance needed on the back undeveloped lot. So the variance needed does not directly affect the dentist office next door. There's no office being developed by this applicant. Only the car wash.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions right now? I guess I'll save all mine for you, Mr. Lenhart.
Wonderful.
Okay.
For the record, Michael Lenhart with Lenhart Traffic Consulting. I'll give a brief overview and then happy to answer any questions. So we did conduct a traffic impact study for this. The study was conducted in accordance with the zoning ordinance, the intersections required and the standards required. Obviously, Route 4 and 235 is failing. We have, we have proffered a payment toward a future traffic signal at Route 235 and FDR Boulevard. That amount is based upon the prorata impact that this project has at the failing intersections and the percentage of the cost of, a cost estimate for the signal. Highway and DPW have reviewed and approved the traffic study. They've approved the recommendation. The zoning ordinance, section 70.6, does state that in cases where public facilities are not adequate, mitigation may be required from the applicant to ensure adequate levels of services. Mitigation is described to include one or the more of the following. And then it goes on to list seven things. But a few of them, one is fees in lieu of an improvement. One is participation in private-public partnerships to provide the facilities. And when we conducted this traffic study, the trip generation that we developed for this use, we assumed that all of the trips generated by this site will be new trips, meaning that if you are, if you're down at the base and you want to get your car washed, or if you're up in, you know, further up 235 and you want to get your car washed, you make a specific trip to that car wash to get your car washed, and then you go back to your, wherever you were going. The reality is, much of this traffic is going to be passed by traffic. People that are driving by the site when they're heading home, they stop in, they get their car washed, they move on. We treated it as if that did not occur at all, and therefore, the mitigation payment that we propose is based on 100% of the trips of this, even if they're already existing on the road network, driving by the site. When we met for the Riverside Townhomes Planning Commission hearing, and we had extensive discussion about the potential for the road connector to the rear of these sites, along the north of these sites. And this applicant agreed to delay this hearing until tonight to be able to meet with the Riverside folks and look at it themselves as well to see if something could be done there. That right-of-way is not, it's not clear who owns it. If it's available for public use, at this point, we can't tell that it is. And that's why the applicant, we've discussed him, given the level of interest and discussion that occurred at that hearing, wanted to make a proffer for some additional dedication along the rear of this property so that in the future, if it's ever determined that that right-of-way is available or becomes acquired or whatever that might be, that the ability to make that road connection is there if it ever is desired. And so with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
You say that that right-of-way has no owner. Mr. Gotcham, I ask you a question if I could this evening. I know you weren't exactly ready for that this early in the evening, but I appreciate your knowledge. And then this might come to Mr. Howser also. We've got a right-of-way behind this that I'm looking at right now that goes behind 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. Seven lots, all behind them, all the way up to, I guess you would call that by-the-mill road.
Correct.
That's there. And from my understanding and my years of knowledge sitting here on the board, that that was a right-of-way that was kept for a future road that might come. Now, when you click on it in different places, it just doesn't have an owner. So is that something that the county, it's been dedicated to the county? To your knowledge, I'm just saying, you might not know either. I mean, but would a right-of-way like that be dedicated to the county at some point in time?
Well, this is probably a better question for the legal department.
Okay, well, let's.
The road was for access to the par, if you look at the way the land is development, there's parcels that front 235, there's parcels that front that access road behind it. So the intent was, that was the access to all those parcels. With that many parcels, it would most likely not be a private roadway. You would have to meet the public roadway standards. So I think the intent was that that road would be dedicated to public use. Who owns it? I'm not sure right now. I think we were asking the legal department to look into it as well, to see if they could figure it out.
Yeah, I know that's not an easy thing to find out. Mr. Howser, you have any comment on that?
Sure, if you know. We did look into this first after Riverside Townhouses came up and the planning commission expressed some interest. Turns out, the research had been done a while back ago because this is not the first time it's come up. Not the benefit of a formal title search. A title abstract would probably get you a more thorough answer. But Brandy McKelvey up in our office was doing enough of a job that, as I understand the issue, ownership of this strip is ambiguous right now because it was not ever actually explicitly conveyed out to anybody. So there is no clear owner between all the lots that straddle the two sides of this property, exactly who owes it right now. The ways forward for this one would be either go in by brute force and just eminent domain everything. You'd still have to go and sort out who actually owns the property, but that's something the courts would figure out, but that's not a quick or easy process. Other way to go about it, but it would require a lot of cooperation from all of the affected property owners would be to get quitclaim deeds from every affected property owner, just whatever interests. Not really saying who does own the property, but to the extent either of these properties are the true rightful legal owners of it right now, they just give that interest to somebody. That's another way to do it, but again, that would take consent from all the parties involved. We did determine, at least from Brandy McKelvey's research fairly definitively, it was never conveyed out to the county at any given point in time that we can tell.
Very thorough. Thank you, thank you, sir. Well, we can check that one off, so. Was there anything else, Mr. Lenhart?
Only if you have questions.
Question. Biggest problem that I have, especially now with the entry on, we'll go to the Route 4 entry. It's close, very close to the, if I'm seeing it on this map where the concrete barrier is and right in, I'm hoping that people won't like do the little round to go to the car wash because your 235 entrance is in a, in my personal opinion, in a bad spot. You are on, coming right off of a merge lane, coming off Route 4, heading north. And because it's really completely opposite from the other side of that intersection where we had a car dealership not too long ago, people coming down that lane are actually slowing down because they're getting ready to get on Route 4. So they had the benefit of, I'll say, traffic slowing down because they know they're going to have to, one, if they don't have the light going with them, they're going to, or the light is going with the people on Route 4, they're going to have to slow down possibly to almost a stop, especially in the evenings when it's stacking up. And they had a benefit on that. Whereas your lane that you're going to be utilizing, they're getting ready to take off. And when they come around that corner, I'm very, very familiar with that corner every day. They're taking off. And not only are they for the Route 4, but I'll call it lane number three, that's on 235 north, is going fast because they're going to try to merge in the lanes number one and two. So we're going to count lanes that, so that would be 1, 2, 3, 4 lanes that are merging into two lanes north of y'all. And it, like anything else, just like if you had four streams of water and you're putting it into two, you've got a lot of pressure coming in there, and it's going to back up. Then you're going to have somebody like Howard Thompson that wants to go in there and get that car washed before I go home because it's Friday afternoon and I want my machine cleaned for the weekend. And they're going to try to be getting in there. And it's right there on the, you know, soon as the, I'll say, the Route 4 lane, lane number four, they've just merged in. And you're asking, I'm trying to get in there, but then I have Mr. Gotch back there. I just use him as an example because we joke about, not joke, it's not a joke. But we come to the conclusion that, you know, when you're coming off four and you're heading to 235, if you don't go fast, you're going to have a problem also because people aren't waiting for you. They're coming through there and they're ready to go. So it's a very, very unsafe spot, for lack of a better thing. I was hoping for your entrance on four to be further back, utilizing that little strip that we don't know who owns it for that right-of-way, moving it forward to there. It's the same thing. People are coming down that lane, and when you're coming up Route, or coming down Route 4 and you're coming toward 235 and you're getting ready to turn toward Hollywood, you don't really slow down, you start speeding up. Because when you get into that turn lane, when I get into that turn lane, I mean, I guess I'm using myself as a bad driver, but I'm speeding up because I know when I come around that corner, I have to go and I have to keep getting it. And no matter how many studies they have or traffic simulator, I see it by sight every day. And it's a scary, scary point for me right there. I mean, I know the property is, I won't say I'm pro-development, but I am a pro-development person. If you own property in St. Mary's County, you have a right to do things with it. But I have a right, I have a job to take care of the citizens in the county. And I'm just speaking for myself now, the other board members, I mean, you got me first, so. I guess that's how it goes. It worries me of there, you can't slow people down. I don't care what you put up there, you can't slow. And the mitigation that's going to be done for this is down the street. It's not going to help this spot at all. It's going to help maybe somewhere down the road whenever they build a light that would stop traffic. And then you're going to have another, just like blocking an artery right there. If it stops it too long, it's going to back up. Not all day, but at the most important times of day. And it's, to me, it's going to, it's going to be tough. And I worry about the neighbors. Now, you've talked about the fence, you've talked about the trees, which are going to be good. You know, that dentist office, though, I'm not a patient there. I know he must have a good practice, he's been there a while. I see a lot of people going in and out of there. I know a lot of people, I think the one time that belonged to Dr. Barley, he had a thriving business there. You know, and I think the people that went there probably go to this dentist, I'm not sure. You know, but I know he has it. So then on top of that, you have those folks. And then we're coming up to Riverside, and then you got those folks. So though I want you to have a, you know, thriving business, I want everybody to. It just so happens that 20 years ago, at the corner of 235, you know, it, you had the shopping center that's being built across the road. That Wawa would never get built again, not that, that is a disaster that happens all the time. Go through there at 5:30 in the morning and there's traffic. People are running out in front of each other, trying to get in and out of that. Harris Teeter, luckily, when we worked on that, we got a big piece of land dedicated out front for our future development. Now, we know State Highway is not in a big hurry to do any flyovers or any improvements to our intersections. But sooner or later, they're going to come, they're going to come looking for your corner. But that's, God knows how, I won't see that in my lifetime, I'm sure. It's a very worrisome corner for me. You know, your project itself, I know there's going to be a little bit more added to it, probably somewhere down the road, it might expand a little bit. And then if you have that back right-of-way, it's going to be really good because you can go, come out of that right-of-way, go down behind those pieces of property and come out, you know, by the mill, which by then, somewhere, I can't, I don't even know if Mr. Gotch can tell me when that light at FDR and 235 will be there. They'll benefit from having that light. Same thing with the people across the way in Woodland where we built another car wash, by the way, that they benefited from having that light out on 235 so that they could just get in and out. It's going to be tough. You got any questions for me? It's just my comment. You know, I'm a little long with it, Mr. Lenhart, you've.
I mean, I understand, it's a busy intersection.
It's the busiest intersection.
It's busy, yes. I understand, it's busiest in the county. I mean, that's acceleration and decelerate, the ACEL/DCEL lanes that are on Route 235 are there for the reason of cars merging in and out of traffic. They're all up and down 235, they're through Prince Frederick, they're through Waldorf. I mean, that's how State Highway puts them in for the express purpose of serving land adjacent to the roadways. Are they perfect? Maybe not, but they do work pretty well, and they do serve the purpose. And site distance is more than adequate on all four corners of the intersection. So, you know, and State Highway has approved.
Let me tell you the problem I have with what you just said with there, too. I'm back on Route 4, Mr. Gotch, and I'm heading north again. So I am getting ready to pull out on 235, and I'm looking like this. I'm looking over my left shoulder to see what's coming because I'm getting ready to come out in that ACEL lane. But then the person that was in front of me decides he's getting ready to get himself a clean car. And he's getting ready, he's slowing down, he's getting ready to turn right into that project. And by the time I get my head, which doesn't take long, split second, car's right there, slowing down, you know, to pull in there. What do I do? You know, it's, you know, I might be able to handle it. Some people might not be able to handle it. It's an ACEL/DCEL, really, instead of being like this, it's all right here. So, I mean, you've got a split second of time from that point, whether I'm, you know, when I'm looking over my shoulder, because you have to look. I mean, you don't have to turn all the way around, but you do have to look because if that light is green, I mean, you have to, you've got to be ready to either go fast, slow down and stay in that lane, you know, and it's a.
Understood. I think I understand the situation you're describing. I would simply offer, I don't think that's isolated to just this intersection. That's just about every signal.
This is the intersection we're working with, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Keep the questions. What time was the day, evening, night, whatever? Was the traffic study conducted?
It's conducted, we do three hours of traffic counts in the morning, so 6:30 to 9:30 in the morning, and three hours in the evening from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. And then we pick the peak 60 minutes in the morning and the peak 60 in the evening. And that's what we study.
Okay. My second question. I've got your impact study report. So on page 23, section 5, wrote, "Based on the analysis contained in this report, CIV analysis indicate that the following intersections will not meet adequacy requirements of St. Mary's County or MSHA." So that one sentence alone, then on page 4 of the staff report dated August 26, under small b, adequacy, adequacy of the roads, it said that it's going to be 50, 50 an hour, traffic visits there.
I think.
I can read that. Note, trip generation is more than 50 peak hour trips. Not days, hours.
Correct.
Okay, so, and then, in order to make it right? in order to make this extremely busy, the busiest intersection in St. Mary's County, to make it right, they're going to offer twelve thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Help me understand how this meets the requirement? Because from what you've written and on the staff report, they both say they don't meet it. But help me understand.
Ms. Delai, I'll jump in, Mike, you can. As I think the planning commission knows, when someone develops a piece of property, they're required to mitigate for their impact, not the impact that's already there. That's, that's clear law. Within the development district and the growth areas in our ordinance, they allow developers to contribute to their share of an improvement to pay a fee in lieu for mitigation when there's not a mitigation that can be done. That's the law that this county has adopted, that this planning commission re- gives recommendations to county commissioners on. That's what it says. That amount is based on the number of trips that will be added to that intersection. And, and Mr. Leonhart knows those details much better than I do. Um, it's the same formula that's been used for other ones that have been approved very recently. So it's the same formula that's already been adopted and accepted by this planning commission just a few months ago, so.
Thank you, I do understand that. Well, my question is, it doesn't meet the requirements. He's got to have three, he's already asked for, um, well, he's going to ask for mitigation for variances, he's going to the, uh, appeals board for buffer, for landscaping. This does not meet, not even the minimum requirements, because if it did, he wouldn't be going to the appeals board.
Respectfully, this planning commission approves plans all the time that are conditioned upon getting variances to the appeals board. So if you're going to say that, that means that you've approved many of them that don't meet the requirements. I hold a different view of that. Our zoning ordinance says you can get variances on your projects if you meet those standards and you approve it to the Board of Appeals. There's no guarantee that my client will do that at the Board of Appeals should you approve this and condition the approval on those variances being granted. The reason why our zoning ordinance, like I think every zoning ordinance in our state and probably in the country, allows for variances is there's no one size fits all ordinance that fits on every piece of property. They got to go and prove that this property is unique enough to get those variances. Maybe they will, maybe they won't, but that has nothing to do with the question on the traffic. Because that, those are different variances. So on the, on the first question about the, the traffic, it does meet the ordinance. We're allowed to mitigate for traffic, we're allowed to contribute to future improvements. This planning commission in the last couple of months has authorized that on other projects. That's what this applicant is asking to do.
Probably I voted against it.
Yeah, on, on the, yeah. But, but the planning commission has approved it and that, that is now
If it meets the safety requirements.
Safety's the issue.
Right.
Right.
And
I just wanted that, that, that point in there.
That's correct. And every agency that has reviewed this says that this one does. And every agency with that expertise has said that this application meets that. State Highway, DPW, and your staff report gives a recommendation that this meets all of those requirements. It's at the end of it, they've found that, the reviewers of this, and I mean, I can read it to you, I know you all have the staff report in front of you. The staff concludes, based upon a thorough review of the application and the concept site plan, the proposed development appears to meet the requirements set forth in the applicable sections of the comprehensive zoning ordinance.
It appears.
And, and it also
Yes, and they're recommending, and if you want me to read each one where it says it meets the requirements, they do say that throughout. So it does say that in your staff report. Now you can ignore what the staff says and deny it, I don't think you should.
I'm not ignoring it, um, and I'm not even voting right now. I'm just saying that, that's why we have a planning commission, because we, we, we pull in all the information and
Mr. Chairman, but it also says in our, uh, guidelines that we have to uphold the safety of the, of the community. And I, looking at this site plan for In-N-Out, right, In-N-Out, well, we're not, we're not voting yet, I think it's, I think it does not. Even with Mr. Leonhart sentencing that thing, the staff report, looking at the site plan, I do not think this meets the safety and welfare of the citizens of St. Mary's County.
And Mike, I don't know if you want to address that sentence, I, I think that that's, that the intersection does not meet the level of service that's required, but in the development district, we're mitigating for it, is that?
The sentence in my study or in the, uh, the APF form? Uh, you, you quoted two things, I'm not sure.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear you.
The sentence, uh, which sentence are you referring to? Was it
One where it meets the safety and it's in the, I, I was looking for it, it's in the staff report, it's in it every time.
Well, uh, uh, if you can find it, that, that would be great.
Definitely.
The, the one thing I would offer is, uh, this, the State Highway issued an approval letter of our traffic study dated August fifth, twenty twenty-four, states the State Highway concurs with the report findings and will not require this, uh, submission of any additional traffic analysis. An access permit is required for all construction within the S H A right of way. S H A, uh, both of the access points are to State Highway roads. Uh, State Highway has reviewed and approved the study. It had the concept plan in it, it showed the right in, right outs. Uh, they meet the State Highway's standards and guidelines. And, um, what, I mean, while I understand your concerns, if the State Highway didn't feel they were safe or didn't meet their standards, uh, they would not issue a permit.
Was all the questions that State Highway had in the staff report, because I know that was a while ago, already answered? Or is that stuff that's
Uh, I haven't
There was some District Five and other questions in there that says you need to recap like this, something's not right based upon, it's on a couple of these pages.
If it was traffic related, they've been resolved because I have an approval letter. I've, I had some back and forth with the state, they had comments or questions, we answered them, they gave us an approval letter, uh, that all comments had been resolved. Um, now, I don't know, sometimes, um, the, the civil engineer might submit plans and the state might make comments about hydraulic calculations or different things. I don't think you guys have made those submittals yet, so.
Not yet.
Um, I, I think
This was traffic development and support division comments by Julie Wright.
Yes, those have been resolved.
Okay.
Yes. And, um, matter of fact, the August fifth, twenty twenty-four letter, um, from the State Highway approving the study, Julie Wright's response in that letter was, we agree with the proposed fee in lieu for mitigation and have no further comments at this time.
Okay, we didn't see that. Well, I don't remember seeing that part of it, but, um, let me ask you one more question about two thirty-five.
Yes.
The entrance there, the right in and right out, is that the same exact lane that the dentist office uses and Riverside Townhouses if approved will use? It's going to all connect, I'm going to assume? There's a little short, um,
There's a short acceleration lane that comes off of Route four.
Yes.
That, uh, would tie into the, an XL decel from our site that would then be a decel into the Riverside, uh, and, you know,
It was all the same, is what I'm saying.
All the same.
That lane that you're showing there is that little XL decel off of Route four now that you're going to tie into, that the dentist office uses and then that the Riverside will, will use, okay.
Correct, and that's similar to the auxiliary lanes that run
Oh, yeah, I'm just making sure that it's all the same.
Yes, yes.
Making sure it's the same lane.
Yes.
Mr. Leonhart, to answer your question, chapter seventy-one B dot five, it says, we'll promote the health, safety and welfare of the general public. And some paragraph after that that says, that's part of our responsibility too. So I guess really my question to you was a rhetorical question, was help me understand how the state can approve it when you've documented it, that it won't. I, I think you documented it correctly, by the way, that it won't be
How they could approve it when, I'm sorry, I didn't
When you said it will not meet the adequacy requirements of St. Mary's County or M dot S H A.
Well, it doesn't, it
This is a rhetorical question, we can, we can go around this barn fourteen times tonight, I'm, I'm done, thank you.
Okay, I, I would like to just respond to it. So that statement, um, if all of the intersections were level of service D or better, then they would pass, there would be no improvements, there'd be no mitigation, there'd be no proffer for a fee in lieu. Because it does exceed, we do either have to make improvements to, to mitigate. And in this case, since there are no improvements that are reasonable or proportionate to our impact, we've identified the fee in lieu for, um, our prorata impact at FDR and, uh, two thirty-five, which is a, it's one of the, it's the county's top priority in the, the letter to, um, State Highway Administration for state funding. It's the top planning for, uh, priority. There were, um, there were a number of different areas and there were four different projects under planning and that is the top priority.
So, so what you just said, you can't really fix those lanes right there, so you're going to do fee in lieu down the street at FDR Boulevard, which at times, and the county does want that, at times that will slow traffic down, you know, so that they can, people can get out of FDR, might stop that. But the majority of the time, that's going to be a free lane. So the, the traffic will go as, as it's going fast and you can't fix that. You can fix the intersection down the street, but you can't fix that street in front of your, your project. Across the road, they have a turn lane and they have three lanes. Seems to work very well on, on across the street, but yours, you've got four lanes that are squeezing down into two. And until that third lane goes all the way up, I'll say to, um, Oak Crest, which nobody knows when that's going to happen, that's a, that, that is a big squeeze. And you just said that you can't fix that, but you're going to help fix that, which I, I, I appreciate it. And that's what, you know, you're supposed to do, that's what fee in lieu is all about. But it's not exactly fixing this problem. And I'm not here to needle you or anything like that, I mean, you know, you can, I guess you can pretty much tell my, my opinion on that. But you can't fix that, you can't fix it, Chris, you can't fix it, and I know if you could, you would. But you just even just said, we can't fix that, so we're taking it as fee in lieu, in which you are allowed to do, and that's fine. But it's still not going to make it any better. You've still got lanes that are squeezing down and then squeezing down some more and then squeezing down a little bit more to, to take it into two lanes. Which when they finally get to it, and we, that was explained to us by DPW a little while back about how the, when it gets up by the new hotel, they're going to do some shifting and, and all that, but that's, that's coming, that's in the future. And that's not right there at that intersection. And that's, that's the part that really it's, it's, I can't get past it, I mean, I just, I see it too much, I, I see it. I've almost, uh, when I go up the road, a lot of times I come down Route four and I go north to Hollywood. And I've, several times I've had, you know, whoa, one of those whoa moments, you know, where you, you, you look and then you, you look and you got to be quick. I mean, that slow neck is not going to work for anybody when they're there at that intersection, worries me.
And just a couple of comments, certainly respect your opinion. What I think Mr. Leonhart was saying that the level of service of the intersection cannot be fixed, so that's why we're allowed to do a mitigation, not, not the specific issue you were talking about. So just to, and Mike, if I misunderstood, please clarify. The other thing I'll state for the record, I believe Mr. Gotch testified to this at the townhouse hearings that, that I viewed online afterwards. The other thing that light will do when it's put in place will pull traffic out of the intersection as well, so it'll make it less congested. So it's not, it, it's not just that there'll be a light there slowing traffic coming down, but there will be less traffic because cars coming on Route four can take the left and go up two thirty-five and avoid the inter- I, I think it's just important noting that for the record, you still might not think that matters, but I think it's important.
I'll respond to that also, and it will, because I do use Route, every weekend we use Route, when I, when I go to the landfill and I go and I use FDR Boulevard and I always use that back road, and then when we go home, I'll say I'm one of the bad people, I cut through the Wildwood Apartments and, and then come out in the back so I don't have to come out on two, when we go to Harris Teeter or, or whatever we might do in that shopping center. But with that light, that's only a single lane that's going up to FDR Boulevard, that light, well, I say single lane, one, one in and out, you know, two lane highway that goes in there, can't take but so much out, and then that's going to stack. But it's not going to slow the people down on two thirty-five, it might take some cars off, but it's not going to slow them down. And if you take too many cars off two thirty-five, they might go a little faster because they don't have as much traffic to slow them down. So that's not the best answer for me.
Well, I think it's important to note for the record because staff has said that and that's why it's a priority of the county to do. I think pulling traffic out of there will make it safer, you know, and I can disagree on that, you know, if you think it doesn't, I, I think it will.
In a way it will.
Staff thinks it will.
It's going to take a little bit of traffic off, but it, it can only handle but so much, I mean, the, the, the length of traffic that could go from, I'll say Route four, turn left on the FDR to go north to come out at the, the new light that'll be there, due to the grocery store that's there and that, that shopping center, a lot of those people, it, it's going to, it's going to stack up. It's going to be, it's going to be tight, and then you got all the people that live in the apartments right there on FDR that are next to, um, Harris Teeter. They create a lot of tra- so it's already going to have a lot of traffic on it, it's got a lot of traffic on it now and it'll have more as soon as those people can use that light. Instead of them coming out and going down and taking a left, they're going to, the people in the, in the apartments are going to use that and the townhouses across the street, they're going to, of course, they're going to utilize the light, anytime you have a light, they're going to utilize it, which they can't do now. So they're going to be the ones that are getting the most usage out of that. And, uh, I think it'll put a squeeze on the other people getting, getting in there. I wish FDR had, you know, been a wider road, uh, but it's, it's a good road. I mean, I, I use it all the time, anytime I can, I go on FDR Boulevard. Some family members don't like traffic, traffic circles, I think those circles keep you moving just right, right straight on through there. It's a, it's a great road to use all the way, all the way to Lexington Park, you know, when they get it finished, so, yeah, it's a great road. But right there, I just, we'll just agree to disagree.
No, I understand, and, and this property that we're talking about, we would ask that the planning commission consider the use that's being proposed. It's a lot less intense than what's allowed under the MXM zoning, which was the recommended zoning that this planning commission gave to the Board of County Commissioners five years ago. So if that, I, I think you should think about what could go there and what's being proposed and the reasonableness of it. Um, this is a reasonable use for that corner. Uh, you could see a lot more intense that's there and all of the entrances, all of the traffic have been approved by all of the agencies. You know, if you just don't think anything should go there, you can deny everything, but respectfully, I don't think that's what this planning commission should do when it meets all the requirements that are there.
I think there are things that could go in that site that wouldn't generate as much traffic.
Well, sure, but it should have been down zoned when, when the plan went in and it wasn't.
That should have, could have, would have.
But it wasn't, and then so the property owner has a reasonable expectation to be able to do the things that are allowed there if they meet all the requirements of all these agencies, that they've clearly gone to a lot of expense and planning to go through. And that's how they got here tonight.
And I'll, I'll bring up one other thing in this, you might think this is completely out of left field and, and anytime I come out of the car washes, and there, there's a couple of them here in the county that I, that I utilize, you have wet tires. And people come out of those car washes and they don't have traction when they come out of there. And they skid, they come around a little bit, some of them try to do that, a lot of them don't try to do that. It creates a little bit more now, I told you, I can see that look on your face like, really, Howard? Really?
I've never given you that much
Way too long. It happens, I see it all the, I go, I work for an employer that says, we'll give you a truck, you keep that truck clean. And I keep that truck clean, so I go to the car wash a lot. If you get my business, if you ever get built and you get my business, you're going to see me at least once a week. And I watch these people come out of these car washes and I'm like, really? You know, what are you doing, that right, I can't, I won't say where I'm at because then they're, they're reckless a little bit when they come out of, because, just because they don't have any, um, traction when they do it. And that's just a very insignificant thing, but sticks in my mind also with that, I just watch these crazy people come out of that car wash, I'm, makes me laugh a lot of times.
We're not ready to respond to that, Mr. Thompson.
And I'm not trying to do that as levity, but it's, to me, it's, it's, it's what goes on, so. I've said, I've said enough, anybody else have a question?
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Do the state go by your recommendation or do they come down here and do surveys too?
Well, they have, uh, they have a district office in Annapolis that, I mean, they go out and they, they have staff that goes out and does field surveys all the time. I don't know that they did a field survey specific to this, but they're very familiar with the area, the roads and their standards. And so, you know, I'm comfortable that And so, you know, I'm comfortable that, we put a study together that had findings in it, and we made a recommendation for the mitigation payment. And of course, they agreed with that after some communication back and forth. But I'm comfortable that it was well thought out, and that it does meet their standards and guidelines.
Since I've been on the board in January, we've talked about that the state do not come down to the county, or don't have time. I can see in what Howard's been saying, every day on Route 4 and 235, people get on the slow lane, coming north on 235, speeding across that intersection so they can merge in. And to put another, if people gonna slow up to come into the car wash, and people coming north from Route 4, that will make a very dangerous intersection. And if we're basing this on the planning, what was done 10 years ago, this county has changed. And I feel compelled to, for safety of the citizens of St. Mary's County, that is gonna make this intersection a very dangerous intersection. If we're basing it based on what the planning commission did 10 years ago, proving it, it, it's a different county. It, it's just not a safe intersection.
Internally, we respect your opinion, Mr. Brown. The, what it's based on is the current zoning ordinance that's been amended multiple times over the years. I, I mean, it's based on the criteria that the county adopts by the county commissioners, often upon recommendation of this board. That is the law of our county.
Based on something a long time ago, though.
Well, i- i- it's amended periodically. The, the comprehensive plan is done, you know, you heard tonight, roughly every 10 years. The last one was done in 2010. The Lexington Park one was done in 2019, so that was not 10 years ago. That was, that was five years ago. And so, the comprehensive plan for this area was adopted more recently than the one that you heard about tonight. But really, that plan, the, the 10 years back, is not what we're talking about. It's the current zoning ordinance that can be amended by the county commissioners any day of the week they want. They don't have to wait for the comprehensive plan to amend their own zoning ordinance. So, it's the current law of our county that my client has to abide by and has to plan by. Otherwise, it's just random. Otherwise, they have to guess what is important, other than following the law. And that, and that's the bind that, that I see this client and other clients getting in, is that there are clear requirements in our ordinances, they try to follow them, and it's not always enough. And, and that's the frustration on their side. But I, I hear your concerns, but the com- the last comprehensive plan for the Lexington Park Development District was 2019 adopted, and then the, I think the, the zoning ordinance amendments came out the, that year or the following year. So, it's, it's been more recent for this area than 10 years ago.
And I, I'm not 100% clear, but what I think I heard you describe was vehicles coming from the base, and they're driving up 235.
Going north. But they were getting that slow lane, and, and speed on the slow lane to come across intersections so that they can merge into the two lanes.
Okay.
That's what they do. They do that.
Well, that's a legal movement, I mean.
Oh, yes, it is.
And, and that, that, that lane does go up 1,000 feet or so, and it, where it transitions back. I mean, that's a standard transition type, not, not to say that that doesn't happen. But those lines are, lanes are meant to have capacity through an intersection, so.
Mike, one more quick, well, well, one more quick question. What's the total, without looking on here, and I, I had it written down, what's the total number of trips a day?
A day.
Just a close estimate.
I don't know that we have a daily estimate. Oh, we do. 780 trips per day, that's in and out, so.
Oh, half in, half out?
Half in, half out. 306, or 390.
What, what's the hours of the car wash? Do, do they have any self-service things where they spray the wand, or?
I think this is not that type of, of thing. It's, it's a, it's a tunnel that you pull up and you drive through, and you'd have to, there'd have to be employees there to take your information, take your payment. I don't know if they get you out of the car, they take your car through, I'm not sure exact operation.
But it's not a 24-hour, like, some of them, um, ones where you have the wand, you put the quarters in a machine and?
No.
You know, do it yourself, they're open a whole lot longer and later than that. Okay, so 780, okay, thank you.
Yes.
One question that, I know when we did the Honda and Kia thing, you described how you got around the U-turns, if you will. I haven't heard a discussion here with these right in, right outs. In both cases, you kinda keep going that direction, and it's tough for people coming the other way to get in, or if the exiting people wanna go back the other direction. So, I don't know if you had a discussion or thought it out as to how the U-turns were gonna be working here.
We did have some trip assignments in the study that assumed U-turns, I, I think. And that's probably a conservative estimate, that there might be some U-turns for people to get to and from it. But I think the reality is, this is a, more of a convenience use. You don't necessarily make a special trip here. If it's not convenient to get in and out of, there are other car washes that might be along your side of the road, or further along, you know, if you're commuting one place to another, another car wash that's easier to get in and out of. That Honda dealership, if, if you're, if you're going to the Honda, you're going to the Honda. It's, you know, you'll make a U-turn to get there.
But you had it mapped out very well when you were presenting that one, and I haven't heard a discussion on this one.
Okay, well, we did, we did have some assumptions of U-turns in here, but those occur at, you know, where there are left turn lanes and ability for those to be made.
It was a very curious, when I looked at this, it was very, not that I'm a business person, but it was very curious to, from a, a layperson, just looking at this, thinking that they're missing half of the business, because people, you know, they're, people coming south, they have no way to get there. People going north on 4, other than doing a U-turn at the church, have no way to get there. It just seemed like they're missing half the, half the business. And it doesn't take away from the site, I'm just saying it just seems like from a, I'm sure they did an economical plan or something. Think about that, it just didn't seem to be a well-thought-out position when I looked at it. If I was building a business site, and I understand what you're saying, that it's a convenience thing.
Right.
The only, one of the good things is, that 235, right in and right out, they won't have any of the cars coming off of 4, 'cause they'll use the 4, right in and right out.
Right.
So, at least they won't be merging to go, and slow down to go there, 'cause they'll just go in off the?
Right.
Off the other, off the other entrance, so just a.
You, you raise a good point, and, you know, think about your travels around the state, where there's a major intersection, and there's gas stations on two corners, maybe three corners, because they're not really convenient. They're convenience uses, you wanna go in, get gas, get your coffee or whatever, and get back on the road. You don't wanna have to make a U-turn, and then another U-turn. And I think this would be similar. I, I mean, our office is in Severna Park, there's a McDonald's on northbound Route 2, and, and on southbound Route 2. You could throw a stone and hit one from the other. But they're capturing, you know, different directions of, of traffic, so.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, I guess it's time to open up public testimony. Do we wanna go, do we wanna take a break before public testimony?
Please.
Please.
Five-minute break, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, we'll come back in the session this time. Uh, we were getting ready to open it up to public testimony. Uh, I'll ask you, I noticed, I will ask you when you come up to the mic, uh, to give your name and address, and I'll ask you if I had a chance to swear you in. Uh, I believe I did get everybody, but, uh, and if not, I'll, I'll give you the oath when you come up here. Our first, um, person on my list this evening, and then I'll also, if you're not on this list, I'll ask if there's anybody else that wants to say, have a face, is Penny Dennis. And you can either come sit in the chair or speak into the microphone up there, wherever you're more comfortable with.
Thank you.
Did I have a chance to swear you in?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, if you raise your right hand now. Do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, could I have your name and address, please?
My name is Penny Dennis. I am the church administrator at Our Father's House, Assembly of God Church, which is four, five, zero, two, zero, Patuxent Beach Road.
Didn't mean to make you swear, then. Little levity, it's late, okay. Okay, you got, uh, three minutes if you could, please.
All right, thank you so much. Again, good evening to everyone, and I thank you for allowing me the time to, uh, speak, and ask questions, or express my concerns. Um, and I also want to, uh, thank, um, the, uh, the wave car wash folks for their site plan. I did get to look at that, and we, um, have, um, an actual surveyor in our congregation who looked it over for us, and that really answered a lot of our questions we were having about the storm water management, so I am not going to ask any questions about that. Um, I appreciate what they gave on that. But tonight, um, our biggest concerns currently, um, we did want to know what the future plans for the intersection were, because we had been involved with the state highway administration years ago, when they've talked about four different plans, and, and we had not heard if they had chosen a plan to go with, or what they were going to do, because we know that's going to impact that intersection greatly, and then any businesses on the corners there, it would be impacted. So, that was one of our questions, and I think you addressed that when you said, "It sounds like they're not doing anything for many years to come." Is that?
That's your opinion. I can't, I can't say, I'm not, I'm not here to sway you. I'm here, I'm here to take in your testimony.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Um, so, um, with the... Our, our property backs up to the thirty-foot wide, um, the piece of strip of land that was in discussion tonight. So, um, knowing now that there is, uh, not really known who the owner is, that is of great concern to us. Uh, the way our property lays, we have one entrance to our property, and right now, you can turn in, in and out from either direction. Um, during high-traffic time today, it is extremely difficult for folks who live in Calvert County to pull out, turn left, and go to the bridge. Um, so they are looking at, when it's high-traffic, already having to go up to the intersection, uh, go north on two thirty-five, try to get across three lanes of heavy traffic to get to the FDR turn, and make a U-turn, come back down to the intersection again. So, we're already looking at that, and it's, um, difficult for many of our folks to be able to make that turn safely. Um, so with any future plans that happen with that intersection that impact our ability to access our property, that's of great concern to us. So, I just want to just put that before you guys, that, um, that's something, you know, we'll try to do our best to keep apprised of what's happening, but, um, we had looked at that thirty-foot right-of-way, is that a potential eventual way for us to get to our property? And so, not knowing who owns it is of concern to us. And so, we are looking forward to being able to hear the results of any research on that. The one other comment I have is that if, uh, it was said tonight that the intersection at Route four and two thirty-five is a failing intersection, and it is of great concern that if it's already a failing intersection, that we will be placing more ins and outs into that intersection. Um, and as it is now, when you're on Route four, approaching two thirty-five, that, um, I guess deceleration, acceleration lane begins right after the entrance to our property. And so, we always see people that are going to be turning, they get over immediately, and they start zipping up the highway right there to get to that corner, and now you will have another turn right there, that somebody could be slowing while another person's, you know, speeding along there. So, that is a concern as well, of adding to the, um, intersection. And, uh, you also brought up, uh, during the conversation tonight, that some people might decide they want to go to the car wash, but they're coming from the wrong direction, so that they may make a U-turn, and U-turn at the church. And, um, we see that happen all the time. People are always U-turning on our property, um, you know, that's okay. Uh, in general, that's okay, but, um, we do have to be concerned with the amount of traffic that is utilizing our property to do their turnarounds, and, and certainly in the future, if there's any opening of that thirty-foot right-of-way, we would not want our property to become a thoroughfare for people to try to get around the intersection. So, um, I just wanted to put before you that those are concerns that we do have regarding the intersection and what's going on there.
Do any of the board members have any questions? We thank you for coming.
Thank you for taking the time to listen to us.
Great to have you. Mr. Gretzel? And I hope I said that correctly. Desker?
There were three of us in the county with that same last name, and they, we all pronounce it differently, so...
Okay. Uh, could you give us your name and address, please?
My name is Grant Gretzel. I am a, uh, resident of Wildwood, and ten, regularly ten, Patuxent Presbyterian.
Did I get a chance to swear you in, sir?
I, you did not.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. Uh, you raised your right hand. Do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, sir, go ahead.
So, uh, I, as I said, I'm a resident of Wildwood. My, uh, home residence is two-three-two-five-one Oak Crest Lane, and, uh, I regularly make that left turn on, uh, Route four, uh, going south on two thirty-five, going to Patuxent Presbyterian Church. Uh, I had five concerns. Mr. Thompson, you, you addressed, you detailed one of those concerns, the fact that two thirty-five goes from four lanes to two very quickly, in a hundred meters right off the, the, the intersection there. Mrs. Dennis, uh, addressed one of, another concern, is that folks going north to Calvert are going to make a U-turn out in front of Our Father's House, and the only way they're going to get out of that is by being able to go up to FDR and, and making a U-turn, using the proposal light at, at FDR, and making a U-turn. And then, then the third concern I have is now you have a, a do-loop. You have people making U-turns, and then circling back around, so the folks that are coming out are, are behind the folks that are making the, the U-turn. So, it just amplifies that, uh, that traffic that's going to happen. And then, the fourth concern that I have is, is that you have people coming out of St. Mary's Marketplace. I'll, I'll call out Starbucks, but I want to be careful that they're not the only business there. I, uh, I like to use Cold Stone, so, uh, I'm there, but they, uh, um, they come out of the driveway of St. Mary's Marketplace, and they cut across three lanes of traffic going on two thirty-five south to make a U-turn to go on two thirty-five north. Now, theoretically, a proposed light would, would alleviate that, because ideally, you would go out, uh, through, uh, St. Mary's County Marketplace, turn around, make a right, and use that stoplight. Well, they could already do that. They could go out and use the two stoplights, go past Wildwood, make a left on the two thirty-five north, but that's such a slow light, they don't. So, I, I don't see that potential happening. I see people coming out of driveway, coming across two thirty-five, three lanes of traffic through two thirty-five to make a U-turn, and now you have that do-loop again that we just talked about, and they're cutting in front of those people who now are making U-turn at FDR. Uh, you know, I've already had, uh, one T-bone here. Uh, somebody T-boned me in the county because they're doing that, and now you're increasing that probability that someone's going to T-bone me again. And my daughter was in the car. And, and the fifth concern now is, is I am already looking for ways to avoid that intersection. Uh, and, and at the moment, you know, what I do is, is I turn right on to FDR, so I can cut across FDR, use that single lane, and use all the circles, and I would rather go thirty-five than go through the now eleven stoplights, I believe, if I counted properly, to get to the base. And we're going to add another stoplight.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
But I, I think that the future stoplight at FDR, where it may be a hindrance for some, like it adds another light, I really think it'll be a, a really good, a good thing. Um, 'cause like you stated, I, I myself do that all the time coming out of St. Mary's Marketplace. I, I want to go north, and there's no other way to gain access to north, except you have to make the U-turn, cut across three lanes, and do a U-turn at Route four to go north on two thirty-five. It happens, it happens, I don't know how many times a day.
So, sir, you, you already have two other ways. You can come out St. Mary's Marketplace and go right, and go through, uh, on Wildwood Parkway, and come around, and those, there's no houses on that street except for the apartment. You can already do that. Or you can come out St. Mary's Marketplace and use the two lights, and make, make a left and left. Why don't you do that? And I, I, I offer that as a rhetorical hypothetical question to think about. You know, now you're going to amplify that, you're not, I don't think that you'll change your pattern. You're going to, you're going to continue doing that, but now you're going to have the people who are making U-turns in front of you, less than twenty-five yards in front of you.
I'm just saying it's the easiest way, and people...
Yeah, I agree, it is.
Most people included are going to take that route. I'm agreeing with you, that it's a problem. I'm just saying that I, I see it all the time, because I've done it myself, is what I'm admitting to. You know, I'm just saying I, I happen to see that all the time, because it's the, may not be the safest way, but it's the easiest way, and that's what people do.
And I, and I see what you're saying, and I understand, and I empathize, because I, I, twice in my twen- twenty-six years of living in Wildwood, I've, I've made that U-turn at, at Our Father's Houses, Miss, uh, Mrs. Dennis pointed out, and I, I don't like doing that, just because of the, uh, one, it's their property, and two, it's unsafe.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Was there anybody else this evening at public testimony? Okay, hearing none, I'll go ahead and close public testimony, and open it back up from, to the, is there any rebuttal from the applicant?
We'll just be, I'll be real brief in, in our closing remarks, unless you have questions for, for Mr. Speech or, or Mr. Leinhardt. One thing I'd like to highlight, convenience stores, financial institutions, fuel sales, restaurants, fast-food restaurants, taverns, pubs, and breweries are all allowed in this zoning district. This property was just rezoned, uh, four or five years ago. The use that's being proposed here is nowhere near as intense as most of those. If the county had chosen to want to limit development on this corner, we had the opportunity four or five years ago to do so, when that Lexington Park Development District Plan was before this commission, then before the Board of County Commissioners. Nobody suggested it, that I remember, and I sat through most of those meetings. This use is a very reasonable use. Now, the one, you know, I guess satisfaction I get is that, I don't know that there's anything we can say tonight that'll convince members of the commission to, to support this, even though I think it does support every provision of the ordinance that's there. I think staff agrees with that. There is a lot of work that people put into things before they come to you. I know you know that. And there's a lot of engineering, there's a lot of expense, there's a lot of studies, there's a lot of review of it. There's a lot of work by my client and their engineers, and expense on their side. There's a lot of work by county staff, that they put a lot of work into this to make sure it meets every section of the code before it comes here. If it needs variances, you know what that is. This is an application that meets all of those, those requirements. I respect every one of your opinions, all, all seven of you sitting at the table. I have opinions of my own, but, but respectfully, I don't think these decisions should be based on opinions. They should be ma- based on the code, and we feel like we meet all those standards in the code. We believe that the staff report supports that. Um, we appreciate the work they put into that very detailed staff report, and the many pages of agency comments that reviewed these plans before we got here tonight, and said, "Yes, we think this is approvable as a concept site plan." Look, you can deny this, and you know you have the authority to do that, and my client has their, their rights if you do, but if this is not approved there, and something else comes in behind it that does get approved, that's much more intense, that, that's a big risk. And this is a very reasonable use on that really busy corner, the corner intersection that we have. It is really busy, it's the busiest intersection we have. But, I got to ask, if you're not going to approve this, I don't know what you'll approve on there, and then you're just rendering the property useless, and that's just not fair to the owner. So, I just ask that you consider those comments as you vote tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Longmore. Okay, we'll, um, close to all testimonies now, and we'll begin the board's deliberations. Does anybody want to start, or you want to listen to me some more?
Go ahead.
You did a great job, go ahead.
Lead the way.
I don't, well, I don't like to, you know, um... If anything, if this was, I'm speaking for Howard Thompson now, right now, and if I was to, to vote no for this, and something else came more intense, I'd vote no for that, too. Um, it's just one of those things. It comes down to safety, safety, and, and safety, in my, in my personal opinion. I have problems with just how that road is, and, and, and Mr. Leinhardt, and, and if I'm wrong, raise your hand, just so I know I'm wrong, but I don't think state, I think state reviewed it, but I don't think they ever looked at it. And, and if they did, I think they would have been, I think we would have seen more writings on it, more, 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 um, information on it. I don't, I think they, okay, well, you didn't say that tonight. Now, I believe you would have, if you had the chance. Now you don't, so I'm sorry. But I, I, and even, I, I just don't, I don't know who they might have sent. I know, um, you know, we see MDOT trucks, and we see S H A trucks, but I think MDOT has more to do with it. I don't think they, I don't think they looked at this the way, the way, um, this board member sees it, and I see it on a day-to-day-to-day basis. I mean, it's, you know, I got it pretty well down pat, as, and as you get older, you do the same things every week, every day, and I do the same things pretty much all the time. So, um, you said that there was going to be about seven hundred visits a day, I believe, is what was, was said throughout the day, so let's just say that's, let's just use even, a more even number, there'll be three fifty in, and three fifty out, to that. That's good business, I mean, I don't have any problem with that, but that's three hundred and fifty to me, and let's just split it in half. I think you'll have more traffic using your two thirty-five entrance than your four, in my opinion. Um, but my opinion isn't, isn't for y'all, but I'm just saying, let's just cut that in half, and, and say it's a hu- about a hundred and seventy-five in, a hundred and seventy-five out. That's a hundred and seventy-five times a day that somebody's got to go like that and worry about this, or, or somebody that's go- turning in there, and they're going like this because they got worried about the people on Route four. It's an allowed, under the ordinance, but it's still, it doesn't make it any less dangerous. And, and, and the Route four mitigation, it just, every, this board member looks at everything individual, every single piece of property is individual, and we've had pieces of property, and I don't know if Mr. Longmore was on this, but we had a piece in the northern end of the county, and everything passed, everything passed. But there was a big safety concern, and there was a safety concern, because, and the people in the, in the community there came out and, and said about the terrible things that happened at that intersection, and it was turned down, and even before, when it went to the Board of Appeals, which, I don't know if Mr. Brown was on there then or not, it's, it's been a while. It's been a while, but they actually withheld the, the planning commission's vote of no because of the safety. I was surprised, I don't know if it went to court after that. If Mr. St. Clair was here tonight, he would probably be able to answer that for me, but there are times that it's just not safe, and in my opinion, it's, it's just not safe. I mean, I, I, I'm a pro-developer as, as anything, you know, I have, Mr. Longmore might not think so sometimes, because, you know, I have voted against things, but it, it takes a lot for me to vote for somebody not to be able to utilize their property, but there, there, there would have to be other, another entrance, a better entrance, not that close, get away from that intersection, you know, if you were be able to use, utilize that right-of-way, and hopefully in, in time, y'all will be, both you, the church, and the people all along there, a right-of-way behind there, just like it did south of that, where they came up with a road that's going through the back way, greatly would help that, this piece of property, but it's just not there right now. That's the problem I have with it. We all are quiet bunch tonight, you know, scaring me, especially you, Mr. Brown.
What? I only asked one question.
Okay, I, I, that's why I'm, I'm, I'm writing this, I'm writing this date down, Mr. Brown.
Well, I guess you're throwing the mic to me, right?
I am writing this date down.
Well, I think it's been echoed by Ms. Delahaye and you, and I relate to, my problem is, even though we have mitigation, it's not doing anything to really solve that intersection issue. I remember I was involved in one down at Millstone Landing Road, where I went negative, because the mitigation was money for FDR. It did not solve that intersection, or anything around it, uh, as far as safety, and I feel the same way here.
Anybody else want to comment?
Well, I've, I've been, um, sitting here, listening to everybody, and I've had my say.
Well, I've, I've been, um, sitting here, listening to everybody, and I've had my say. I, I mean, I still stand by the fact that it's just not a safe intersection there. I think, I don't know what, I don't know, I think Mr. Longmore does a great job presenting the case ve- very well, and almost turns my head, but not quite yet. But, um, I don't know what, if, what we can do, or what the community can do to, to petition the state to come down and really look at it and see how it works, because I do agree with Chairman that, that, I don't think they really appreciate all the ins and outs, they haven't had to drive it, they haven't had to live it like we do, day after day, um, so. Um, I, I don't think I can support this tonight.
Anybody else?
I, I would just say that one of the, probably the, the only concern that I really have is, is like Chairman Thompson stated, are the cars coming off of four? Trying to get out into the three lanes of traffic that's there, and then people trying to either make a U-turn or come up two thirty-five and get over all three lanes to get into the fourth lane to turn into, into there, is, um, I mean, other than that, I mean, I don't think the Route four will be a problem. I do think that in time, the mitigation will help Route four. And that's, I mean, it's been explained to us many times, that when the light goes in, people will be able to come through the backway behind Harris Teeter and use the light, so you're cutting a lot of traffic off of Route four, so I, I really believe that when that's done, and I, I know Mr. Gott told us a couple of weeks ago that that's in the planning stages now, so I, I think that's coming. Um, like I say, my, my main concern is the people coming off of four that are trying to get, go north in them three lanes, and then you're going to have cars coming north that's going to try to be trying to get over there. So, I, I, I see that as a, as a problem, um, you know, wi- with, uh, with the minimum trips, um, you know, I, I, I mean, yes, it's a, it's a, it's a safety concern, but I don't, in my view, see it as a, you know, it's, I'd say, half the trips are going to use two thirty-five, the other half might use, m- might use Route four, so I don't think it's a, a major amount of trips. Like, I, I do agree with Mr. Longmore that said that you could have plenty more intensity put there, not that it would get approved, but I'm just saying it would be a, you could have a lot of proposed uses there, so, just stating my, my one concern about the cars coming off of four going north, but other than that, I think it's a, it's a decent plan.
Okay. Anybody else? Well, then, I guess the board has heard our concerns, uh, would anybody be willing to make a motion as to how we're leaning?
Go ahead, Patty.
You're going to vote first anyway, so go on and make your motion.
In the matter of concept site plan, number CSP twenty-three dash oh-three oh-nine, Title Wave Auto Spa, having accepted the staff report and having made a finding that the criteria of section sixty point six of the comprehensive zoning ordinance has been met, I move that the concept plan not be approved. And, do I have to go with the rest? Okay.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And I, and I have a second. Okay, I'm going to do this roll call vote. Ms. Robert, you just happen to be, I, I have, everybody, for the new member, everybody gets a turn, so in, uh, one, two, three, in four weeks, you're going to be first, okay? Just to let you know, okay? Uh, Ms. Robert? Ms. Del, well, you're voting for the denial.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Ms. Delahay?
Deny.
Okay. Mike Brown?
No.
Mr. Brown? If you could during your vote, could you just say deny, I guess, because it's kind of...
I want to deny the concept.
Okay.
I will deny.
Okay, thank you, it, it just... Jay?
Approve.
Okay. Mr. Van Kirk?
Approve.
Okay. And I vote deny. I don't know what to say to you. I don't know how to, I could tell you to fix it, you know, I wish I could say, you know, if you do this, you, you can come back as soon as possible, but I don't know what to tell you. Somebody's going to figure it out for you. You have a man sitting there, right there to, to your far right, that's probably going to be able to, to, to help you with that. I thank you for your time, I hope you, I hope the best for you. Um, any other business before the board? Okay, there is no business, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a second, by Mr. John, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We are adjourned, thank you.